Do we have City County coming up on the twentieth, or are they not gonna do it this month? Since it's so-
I think they're off two months.
Okay. Just let me know.
I'll follow.
Where's Harold tonight?
He's right here.
At the airport.
At the airport. He will be. Momentarily.
That's Laura.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting this November eleventh, two thousand nineteen. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order with six board members present. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. That passes six oh. Onto consent agenda. Dr. Cobb, is anything special on here tonight?
Normal stuff on there this month.
All right.
I make a motion we approve the consent agendas presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. And that also passes six oh. We do not have any comments from the public this evening. So we'll move on to reports and presentations. We have students from Knight at the Lab who are going to present to us tonight. Welcome.
Have a sticker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Old Michael, and I'm a freshman.
My name is Quincy Morris, and I'm a sophomore.
And my name is Arlene Meyer Gore. I'm a sophomore. We're from Ottawa High School, and we're excited to share a development on you today.
The question on your sign was, what is the impact of exercise on lung capacity?
To begin, our question is centered around the respiratory system, and its close correlation to the cardiovascular system. The major organs involved are the lungs, three right lobes, two left lobes, the heart, its associated vessels, and two muscle groups, including the intercostals and the diaphragm.
After hearing our topic question, you may be wondering, what is lung capacity? Lung capacity and lung function, although similar, are two separate concepts that must be defined in order to assimilate an answer to this question.
Lung function is defined as the volume once breathing cannot reach or lose loss. According to the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, lung function naturally agrees with age. Lung capacity is volume of every lung's hold. Our lungs fully mature between the age of twenty and twenty-five years old and begin to decline in the age of thirty-five.
The average person can hold between four point five and six point five liters of air in their lungs. The simplest way to measure this is a spirometer test. This is being demonstrated by all of us. Normally, this test would be administered while sitting down, but for the sake of this presentation, we're going to remain standing. This spirometer is an incentive spirometer and is used in hospitals after surgery to promote lung function. Olympic swimmer Michael Phelps is said to have a lung capacity of twelve liters. However, the official world record is eleven point six eight liters, held by Pete Reed, former British Olympic rower.
Well, these two individuals have most incompetence that they're both double level athletes. This incredible lung capacity was not developed overnight.
Exercise increases blood flow in order to compensate for the lack of oxygen in the muscles.
The component of exercise generates increased over time and completes stronger lung capacity.
This in turn allows for further expanded rib cage and increased area for the lungs to inflate. Regular exercise over time decreases the need for oxygen in efficient muscles. It also improves circulation and heart efficiency. This is how the previously mentioned Olympians increase their lung capacities.
Now that we know what lung capacity is and how it can improve, let's look at the differences between males and females.
Normal healthy male has a capacity of six point three six liters, and a healthy female has a capacity of four point five six liters. However, this number can be affected by restricted lung disease. This is when the lungs are reaching a deep breath, and the total lung capacity is decreased.
There are two types of restricted lung diseases. The first is intrinsic, some examples being sarcoidosis, idiopathic pulmonary fibrosis, and pneumonia. The second is extrinsic, some examples being scoliosis, obesity, and coral effusion.
As you can imagine, these restricted lung diseases are attachment to exercise, thus overall affecting the lung capacity of these individuals.
As I mentioned, regular exercise strengthens the intercostals and diaphragm, causing increased airspace for lung expansion. This in turn activates oxygen and carbon dioxide production.
Our research supported opinion for the average healthy individual would be to exercise regularly in order to maintain fitness in the targeted muscles. Some examples of effective exercises could be a combination of aerobic activities, such as swimming, cycling, and running, with anaerobic activities, such as weightlifting, jumping, and sprinting. This is necessary so that in an instance of reduced lung function, your overall lung capacity will compensate and support continued healthy breathing without interruption.
Thank you for listening. Do you have any questions?
A little bit of back information on that. This is the first year that Ottawa High School, we've ever done the competition at Knight Lab. It is sponsored by KU. And these three students stepped up, even as underclassmen, they stepped up. And a little bit of information about that is because they are so involved in all of the extracurricular activities, they met every morning with me at six fifteen for three weeks straight. And then we went to the regional competition at the end of October, and they blew everyone out of the water. It was amazing. So, and we competed against schools such as Blue Valley, all of the Olahtha District, Shawnee Mission. I mean, they were the, they were the big schools, and they really did well. We were very proud of them. So they will present again next Monday and Tuesday at KU Medical on Rainbow Boulevard. And they're gonna compete against the six, well, five other regional winners across the state of Kansas, and hopefully they'll bring home a title. Yeah, so please, any questions, it just helps them prepare, so give them hard ones.
Hey, I think that's fantastic. What a great representation of what our students are doing in schools today, so congratulations.
What type of research did you do? Was it quantitative, qualitative?
Uh, well, we have a book of our resources actually right here, all labeled and, uh, yeah, it's just a book of resources. We mainly researched online, um, different studies of different universities and things like that.
It was hard to use, like, approved websites because a lot of stuff is on Wikipedia, but you can't use Wikipedia. So we use, like, um, the Mayo, funny, in, like, what's it called?
Did you do any primary interviews with doctors or pulmonologists or anything like that?
Uh, we tried to interview one of them, but he wouldn't call us back.
So win anyway, even if he doesn't call you back. Gotta watch them people.
Wow, very good.
Good job. Well done.
Well done, thank you so much. Thanks for sharing that with us.
Good information.
They know a lot more about lung capacity than I do.
And thank you, Mrs. Steinbach, for taking this project on and-
You're welcome.
Really very interesting.
It's very fun. I like it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, thanks. All right, and we are moving on to section five point oh two, which is the OPA presentation. Ms. Harold is gonna provide an update on the services and programs.
Jody, do you have a neat display like that? No?
This one or this one?
You'd go to the fir- right now, I just wanna kinda give you an idea of our menus that we are, we do on a monthly basis. We serve four breakfast options for all grade levels. At the grade school level for lunch, we are serving four items. And at the middle school, we give them six choices. Three of those are the open to goes, which is easy just to grab and go on. And then the other three are the hot entree items. We do fourteen different items at the high school level to give them lots of different opportunities. Some of the things that we have tried this year that are new are the Italian flatbread. This went over really well. We've also done a buffalo macaroni and cheese and a pork enchilada. And we do these meetings with the children twice a year, state requires it, and it's kinda nice to get to know the kids. And we ask them, what would you like to see on the menu? What would you like to have? One of the big things last year was strawberry milk. So we did bring that back this year, and that's helped a lot.
Strawberry.
Oh, and the first nine weeks this year, we have served twenty-one thousand three hundred and eighty-two breakfasts. For lunch, we have done fifty-six thousand one hundred and thirty-six. Year to date, our participation at Garfield is forty-six above last year. Our high school is behind by fifty-one. It's a lot of that was the one-hour lunch that they're doing. We are working on ideas to get the lunch participation up there. But it's better than what started out. We were down a hundred, so we're gradually moving up on that. Week in, we are flat even. Middle school, we are up twenty-two this year versus last year, and sunflower, we're down thirty-two. A lot of that, I think, a lot of kids have went from sunflower to Garfield. But, and that is what we have done so far this year.
So part of the reason that we had Jody and Dee here tonight is that as we were developing the handbook, it was mentioned that you would like to see multiple reports from, from OPA throughout the year, not just the end-of-the-year report as to what we're seeing with our kids, what the menus look like. I think, you know, when you, when you start thinking about between breakfast and lunch, when we had seventy, some almost eighty thousand some odd meals served, you start talking of the, the capacity that must exist within the, within the kitchens. Remember that all of those things are made in the high school and distributed out to the other schools. It's a fairly significant undertaking and one that should not be underappreciated for, for the work that you all do. I think it's also important to, to recognize that the high school, there are fourteen different menu items for them to choose from. I don't know how many homes give their kids the choice between fourteen different menu items, but it's very few, I would imagine. OPA does a great job of trying to provide something to, to finicky kids that like what they like and don't like what they don't like. And I'm glad that they did say that they enjoy strawberry milk and that we've been able to bring strawberry milk back. It's a wonderful idea. But we do appreciate what, what OPA does each and every day, and, and thank you for coming in and bringing it. If our board has any questions for you.
What's the correlation between the open hour at the high school and, and the minus fifty-one kids eating lunch? What's that, how's that correlate?
They are learning to manage their time. And right now, like, a lot of the kids, at the beginning, they all come in at once. And then kids didn't want to wait in line, so then they didn't come. And now they're learning how to manage their time, and so they're coming later because we have that whole hour and we serve food the whole continue hour. And, uh, so they had to come in later. They just needed to learn to adjust. They were afraid that they were gonna miss out or whatever, so they ran in there. And we've been fixing it, having time enough to fix more if they need it or whatever. And so that's why I think it's picking back up because they're learning to schedule their time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Harold?
Jody and Dee, thank you. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you ladies very much.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving down to section five point oh three. Um, Dr. Cobb's is gonna present the Cognia Values Driven Award.
All right, so there you can see in front of my spot there at the desk is the Cognia Values Driven Award. Mr. Robinson and Ms. Bybee and I went to Chicago a couple of weeks ago to accept this award on behalf of Cognia, which is a Midwest accreditation system for us, but also a, not only a nationwide, but universally around the world, utilized over forty thousand accreditation systems throughout the, throughout the world. This is the press release that was released regarding our, our award. But it's talking about challenging factors, and ultimately what it gets to is that, that they are impressed. Cognia overall as a system is impressed with our innovation, and that we are beginning to break down barriers to student achievement and, and making sure that our system is student-centric and being able to move past the normalcy of school and into something different to ensure that each and every one of our students has a personalized learning platform that really provides beneficial learning experiences for them. We've been talking about how the redesign process has begun to impact our schools, and we're, we're just now kind of seeing the benefits to that. Certainly KSDE and, and Kansas State Department of Education and Kansas Association of School Boards is recognizing how that impact is influencing not only our school, but schools in our area. I think this is a direct result of not only being recognized here, but also being recognized throughout the Midwest as a school that is really beginning to change the focus from a more adult-centric system to a student-centric system that is really going to empower students to learn in the areas where they're excited about learning while still meeting all the expectations of the state in terms of, of state standards and ensuring college and career readiness for, for all students. So it's the Cognia Award, really exciting stuff. Uh, and, and we were, we were blessed to have the opportunity to go and be the recipients of the award. But I think it does speak volumes to our board, and, and we really wanted to share it tonight in appreciation of our school board for giving our teachers and our staff the latitude to try some different things for the benefit of our students and ultimately reap those benefits as we're beginning to do. So thank you all very much. I'll have questions if you have them.
Are you gonna build a trophy case now that we've got?
You know, I've always been kind of disappointed that all of those awards and, and whatnot have been sitting down here when the vast majority of the people come into the front of the building. So I think we will put something together where people can come into the front of the building and, and see the recognitions that our district has been provided because of the great staff and the incredible things that our kids are doing. And when we see our kids put on a presentation like that tonight, and you see what Mrs. Steinbach is doing with our kids, and, and the, the value that comes with teachers that show up at six o'clock, and probably for her, more like five o'clock in the morning, to work with our students to help prepare them to be able to participate, not only participate, but then win competitions like this and be able to go and represent our school district. It's a, it's a pretty awe-inspiring situation to be in as the superintendent and watch that unfold each and every day.
We know there's a lot of hard work that goes into it on everyone's part.
Absolutely.
We do appreciate it. Our kids and community are better off for it, so.
Any questions for Dr. Cobb?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Curriculum update.
You get most handouts.
Yes, I got the award for most handouts. But we're not gonna look at every single one of them tonight. That was for your benefit to be able to see the work that we've been doing. Uh, I would also like to echo Dr. Cobb's thank you to you for allowing us to do conferences like we've been able to do. You know, when you go outside of your district, you really realize how amazing our teachers are, the things that they're doing within our district, how amazing you are as a board, that you support the things that we are trying to do. The last two conferences we've been at, the PLC Conference this summer as administrators, and this one, just reaffirms that the things that we're doing, we're above or ahead of what a lot of districts are trying to do. So it's, it's pretty exciting, and we have to be able to, you know, thank our, our, everyone involved, our teachers, our students, our parents, the administrative staff, everybody working together to be able to do what's best. And honestly, you guys did an amazing job. Very, very proud to see kids get up and do, and not only prepare everything that they prepared, but to be able to speak and present themselves the way they did, that's pretty amazing, and you guys should be very proud of yourselves. Okay, so curriculum update, we have lots going on. And? There we go. Okay, the, I'm gonna start with our math, because this year is a math curriculum adoption year where we typically do a study year before we even look at purchasing possible new resources. We started this last February. What we wanted to do was, we, we needed to change the process in how we went about looking at curriculum adoption review in that we needed to turn our focus back to the instruction and not be just about the resources. So our, the very first thing that our cadre did was came up with a math vision, that what math should look like in USD two ninety. All of the, the visuals, they actually also came up with so that there is representation of the things that we would expect for our kids to, for our instruction to look like in our classroom and the kids that, the things that we want our kids to be learning in math. And some of the key words in this vision statement is that we have teachers providing purposeful, interactive, and engaging lessons because we need our kids to be critical thinkers, be problem solvers, to be able to look at problems and not just go through a process of, of computation, but to really have that mindset to work collaboratively, to figure out problems that are related to math. So that has been our, the state has developed new mathematical practices that were introduced, that were approved in two thousand seventeen. And so that's where our instruction needs to change, is making sure that our math instruction has, includes those mathematical practices. So we went through a process, we have the different phases, are the phases that, are the, kind of the steps of going through a curriculum adoption process, and we are currently on phase three. So it's not a quick process. It's really something that we're valuing and taking our time to make sure that we are really understanding the standards that we're expecting to teach so that when we're looking at resources, we're making sure we're choosing the best resources that are available that will cover the things that we need to have covered in math. The, the shift in the process is our math team is much larger than it has been in the past. Typically, we, in the past, we've just had representation from each level, not so much even having secondary and elementary together, sometimes was separate. And that, but we, this, this, this year, or last, starting last year, we have representation from every elementary building, the entire middle school and high school math departments. So the conversations that we have had have been very, the, the teachers have found it to be very valuable because they're having vertical conversations, not just within elementary or their grade level or secondary and their department, but we're having conversations, K-12. And they very much found those, oh, very, very helpful and beneficial because we also, also are including sped teachers. We are including our gifted teacher, instructional coaches. So there's a large group of people that we're working through this process. And our goal is to develop a collective understanding of what we feel like math looks, mathematics should look like in our district, and then what are our resources that we have available right now? Because if our resources are okay, there's no need to get something just because we're up for a curriculum adoption. And then if, if there's something out there that's better, why is it better? And let's go through a specific process and making sure that we're picking the, being fiscally responsible with what we're choosing as our materials. So that's really been a shift in the process. We, part of the process was again, understanding what our standards are and developing a scope and sequence. So this is very small, I'm not expecting you to read all of that. But we went through a process on the back wall, you can see the papers with the white pieces taped to it or glue taped, I guess taped to it. Our teachers actually went through, this math team went through the process of cutting up every single standard that they're expected to teach, looking at what those standards are, developing, or knowing which ones are focus standards, which ones we should be spending seventy percent of our instruction time, twenty percent, and ten percent of our instruction time on. There is no way with the amount of standards that our teachers have that they would be able to teach every single one of those standards to the same level. So what we look at is we look at which ones are considered our essential standards or our focus standards, and then which are, you know, we are still important, which just need to maybe be touched on. So we put those in quarters, and then teachers actually looked at, okay, now let's have some conversations. They looked at these vertically, and they realized, wow, we have some things that maybe kids get in third grade, and they don't get it again until seventh grade. Well, that's really important for our seventh grade teachers to know that because as they have those kids, then they might, in seventh grade, and they're working on that concept, they might have to build that, kind of refresh kids in what that knowledge is before just, instead of just expecting them that, well, I know they've had it, so we should be able to just move on. So there were a lot of great conversations about where things should be moved around. We got past the, the thought that we should be mapping our, or developing our standards based on the textbook that we have, but they truly were thinking about where should those math standards be taught with their mathematical knowledge versus if that's where it is in the textbook. So from that, we have this scope and sequence that has not been formally rolled out to all of the teachers yet at this point. We're still doing some editing and revising. Teachers, or the team, the last time we met, went back through it to see where are the domains, like numbers and operations? What does that look like, K-12? What does geometry look like, K-12? What does operations and algebraic thinking look like, K-12? Went through each of those areas to see if there was any changes that needed to be made. And then we're doing some highlighting to be able to help it to be a little more user-friendly for our teachers. Is there any questions about the math portion before I move on to overall curriculum work?
So, uh, the scope and sequence, I mean, back, back long ago, we would, we would choose a math series and then kind of massage the scope and sequence to fit the series that we were choosing. How's that going to, to change?
Well, that was the, that was the piece that we had to get past because we need to be thinking about mathematically, how do those, how, how do those skills progress? What's the progression for understanding, for kids to be able to understand? And for instance, a lot of, a lot of them thought, we need to start with geometry first in the elementary, where it used to be geometry was last. They also noticed that a lot of measurement and data is very, at the very end, and doesn't have a whole lot of focus to it, yet it's tested. So there's some things there that we have to look at. Where mathematically does it make sense for our kids to have those skills? So more and more resources are also showing that, kind of following the same change of philosophy, if you will, because they're saying, a lot of the resources will say, you don't have to follow it, page one to page to the end. You can move it around based on what you feel is best for your students and their understanding. So, so we're getting it back to our teachers really truly understanding what's the progression that's going to make the most sense for our kids in learning mathematics. And how does it build on each other?
Any other questions?
Okay, we will move on to the rest of the curriculum work. So, excuse me, so all the, every teacher in every content area is at this point working on developing those essential standards, pretty much the same process that we went through with math, just not as, as in-depth of doing the scope and sequence at this point. But they have gone through the process of determining what of their standards are their essential standards. They're in the process of, and should, most of them should be done with what would be considered our first quarter map, and starting to put those into the essential standards charts. Those are things that I have shared with you in the past, and I reshared those documents with you so you could see the templates that the teachers are working with. They're receiving support from their administrators, from instructional coaches, myself. As a matter of fact, I'll be over at the high school all day tomorrow where teachers can come in, and I can offer support to them in what the work that they're doing with their, in particular, curriculum map. Uh, and this is a process that will continue well throughout the year. Our goal is to be able to have all four quarters mapped, and then be able to, from there, start moving towards that we have a guaranteed and viable curriculum. That's, that's our overall vision, is making, that's the process that we're going through. Preschool has just started with a curriculum review. They actually have a very strong resource, creative curriculum. And so they, Mr. Robinson brought in some professional development for them at the beginning of the year. So they actually determined what their, the intended use of the resource that they have, and they have actually gone through with Mrs. Fanning the process of doing a scope and sequence just like this process was, where they could see where- where they could see where are their standards? What are the standards that, how do they fit within their units? Their preschool's designed a little bit differently and they're, they're more developed, or designed in units. So through the early learning standards, but they're going through that same process. In the winter, they will take a look at, with Mr. Robinson and Mrs. Fanning, they will be looking at, is creative curriculum the, the resource that they have right now, is, is it doing what we need it to do for our preschoolers? Are there, I know there's an updated, some updated things that they have already received as trials? And is there something that we need to be looking at, a different resource or stick with what we have? Like I was saying, the creative curriculum that they have is still rated very high as far as effectiveness when you're looking at different types of ed reports. So because our math process, doing the scope and sequence was so successful, we would like to try to go through this process with a group of teachers for ELA and science this winter. The reason we're holding off on social studies would be because the state is at this point updating the social study standards. So we would want to wait to do this process until the updated standards come out next year. For ELA, ELA's a big, big, it covers a lot of, of skills and we would like to focus on writing. And we're looking to possibly do this at one of our January professional development days, at least get it started. It may not get done, but at least get it started, start having conversations. The writing piece actually was brought to, the, the need or the want was brought by teachers. Some teachers went to a writing conference with, with Mrs. Day and myself and then also through the curriculum advisory council. Also came up that, hey, we are in real need of making, of looking to see what our writing outcomes are K-12 and trying to have a little bit better plan for that. So that's where that process is coming from, or why we're doing it so quickly. Fontes and Penel Classroom, we are, it's going really well, our K-3 implementation, full implementation this year. It's been great to talk with teachers. I direct you to the part on our, the PowerPoint here where our comments from our teachers, our students are discussing text more deeply. The one, I know our teachers, a couple, I've talked to a couple of different teachers and Mrs. Day also hears a lot from teachers that they feel like they're better reading instructors and that was what I had hoped and, and thought by seeing what the materials are. But it gives them a lot of also leeway, or what do I want to say, flexibility to be able to offer reading instruction that is responsive to their students. So they're not just following, here's day one, day two, day three, but they are truly determining what lessons their students need based on where, what their student's progress is and whatever the skills that they are working on. So structured literacy in Fontes and Penel Classroom, the reason I shared that with you and I shared a document that Mrs. Day and I had created is coming down from the state, there will be mandates that we ensure that we have structured literacy as part of our reading instruction. So what we wanted to do was make sure we could show our teachers and ourselves that the components that are part of structured literacy, which are listed there, we do find those in Fontes and Penel Classroom. So the document that I shared with you shows exactly our teachers where they can find sound symbol association or syllable instruction within their Fontes and Penel Classroom components. So it was important for us to be able to make, first of all, make sure ourselves that, hey, we are addressing this and Fontes and Penel Classroom does address this. So when those mandates come down from the state, we'll be hopefully ahead of the game there. At this point, the structured literacy document that I shared with you has only been presented to K-2 teachers. That was just at this last professional development, so other teachers at this point have not seen that document. However, it's mostly for the foundational language instruction that happens in K-2. So that's why we started with those teachers. Sometimes we have to decide, it's, not everybody needs to know the information right at this moment because they already have enough in their, full in their brains or on their plate that they don't need. If it doesn't directly pertain to them, then we're gonna hold off on sharing that information with them at this point. Any questions on those two areas? Okay, so then now fourth and fifth grade, this is their professional learning year. And it, this has, it's been a little bit slower start because our materials did not come in as timely as they did last year. So our teachers have pretty much have, the expectation is still the same that our teachers are encouraged to start with the context that they feel most comfortable with. Fontes and Penel Classroom recommends starting with interactive read aloud. Most of them started with guided reading just because they had those materials from the beginning, at the beginning of the year. But now that they have all of the materials, they're, they can start looking into that interactive read aloud. So our professional development and support was, I just listed all of the things that we offer to our teachers to offer that, or to give them support. And others, some are jumping right in, others are taking it just step by step. And however it works for each teacher to be able to get into the Fontes and Penel Classroom materials and understand that, what it has to offer for their kids is really to be developed at their pace. Doesn't mean reading instruction isn't happening. Reading instruction is happening, it, it just may not be directly with the Fontes and Penel Classroom materials. Any questions there?
Are the fourth and fifth grade teachers ecstatic about the, the, the reading materials as the, the?
I'd say some are, yes, they're, the, the texts are amazing and that's what they are just thrilled with. I think there are some that are a little more overwhelmed. If their, if their design of how they taught reading was not to use guided reading or to have the small groups, it may take a little more getting used to because the structure of it might be a little more different, it might be a little different. There's also honestly, I think there's a little struggle with, with some when they're not given, here's what you do day one, here's what you do day two, here's how much time you use, where they're having to, they're really, it develops them into be thinking, back to being a thinking teacher, being able to know where their students are and what skills they're doing well at and what skills they are struggling with and how do we address those skills within their, that, their reading instruction time. And we've also really, with the support, we haven't, there's some that has been not optional and there's others that we've kept it optional because we're really trying to not push them to the place where they are like feeling like, oh my gosh, I can't even take anymore in because there's too mu, I have too much on my plate. So we're trying to, to help them as much as possible. And like I said, the majority of teachers are just jumping in and they're, they're excited about giving it a try. Okay, last area, I believe, is our standards-based grading. And this, of course, I've spoke on before. I think what I would focus on at this point is that we've had our first parent teacher conferences where teachers were able to give the first report that we had for standards-based report card. And a lot of the teachers, some of the comments actually that I heard, heard was that this was the first time I talked with my child about their learning without a focus on their grades. So that was from a parent and then another parent said, I feel like I understand what their learning actually looks like and specifically what we need to work on. So I think those are very positive steps in the right direction. We will still continue to meet with our standards-based grading cadre so that we can look at reviewing, revising, and supporting implementation. The teachers still meet monthly to, in a district PLC to continue making sure that we are all on the same page as far as filling out or determining those essential standards and how we're going to assess those and what it looks like on the report card, on the progress report. So there's still a lot of work that needs to be done, but we are definitely on the track that's moving forward with it. It's pretty exciting.
Just so that our board remembers, the standards-based grading piece comes back with a redesign initiative that was developed by our teachers about three years ago now, it's, it's been a little while. But we are beginning to see that implementation move itself up through the, through the levels, certainly K through, pre-K through five is, is in this situation now. But part of the conversation that's happening with the curriculum piece is that as we create that scope and sequence, the next piece with it is common assessments throughout. As we develop those common assessments, we should have a better indication of how we can implement standards-based grading across all grade levels. You will begin to see some pilots happening at the middle school level as our social studies department there at OMS is beginning to think about how this might look at the, at the secondary level. Certainly secondary is more problematic, maybe for a lack of a better term because of the need for credits that are associated with the grades and GPA and, and requirements to, to gain admissions into a post-secondary institution and all of those things. What you are beginning to hear are region schools beginning to have a conversation and a shift to standards-based grading as well to ensure that the students coming through the college system are not just earning grades based upon point attainment, but earning grades upon, grades upon skills and, and knowledge defined while they're in the classroom. So a lot of those things really beginning to take shape for us and over the course of a number of years, a lot of steps towards the final goal.
And actually, it's really the, the communication that happens at the high school that I have seen is really more on just effective grading practices. And how can we, I know just recently, there was even a conversation that was happening at the high school about what can I do if, what do I do if I have a kiddo who's still working to show their learning even though grades have been posted? So how do we go about addressing that? So those conversations are, are happening, that we're not limiting ourself to when, when the grade book closes, but we're really truly staying focused on what are our kids learning and how are we, they showing us that they have learned? The expected standards, so.
Any questions for Mrs. Bybee?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, we always appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, Amy.
Great information. All right, Mr. Robinson will give us a sped update.
Thanks, sir. The mine now? When Dr. Cobb's asked me to present tonight, I did the best I could to kind of pare it down. As Amy mentioned, there's so much that we're doing, so I'll hit on a lot of these topics just on the surface. And if there's something you would like me to stop and go in more depth, please do, or, or I can provide additional information at a later time. From the time I took this job, I thought that within our district vision, my main responsibility with the programs that I oversee was really that all piece. And there's, there's a balance there of making sure the students in our, our specific specialized programs are getting what they need and also ensuring that we're doing what's best for students that are going through the typical track and are navigating school more on their own without those supports. I would tell you, this year, I am feeling more and more confident and I'll highlight some of those places where I think we're doing an even better job of, of maintaining that balance. And then there's other areas where we're always going to be working on that area. But when we started with new teachers this year, we shared this quote because coming back from the PLC Institute this summer, I think Shannon and I both have taken the approach with our sped staff that we, we've really got to put a focus back on instruction. So much of our special ed focus has been on compliance and that's an important piece with a real legal process like special education is. But we're really trying to refocus our team on the instructional side and really using data to drive what we're doing. And it was important for us to really take a look that we all have in our head this picture of, of a student who's going to be successful in school and those students that aren't. And yet, when you really dig down deep into the data, there's very little there to really have us, give us the ability to be able to predict that early on. So we want to make sure we're providing the best we can for all students within our district. So I tried in each, each section just to give a quick reminder of some of the things connected to the programs that we have. Special ed is probably the one we talk about the most. Most of our referrals right now, one of the things I'm proud of with our schools is most of our referrals come through our sit process, our student improvement processes, which is something we should, we should highlight more often. It shows that our schools have good processes in place to provide intervention for students and, and that we're, you know, we're getting to a point where we're providing a lot for our students before, before we make that big referral to special education and look for those additional supports. Some of the reminders on the side there, one of the things that often we forget is that the majority of our students in special education actually come at school with typical cognitive abilities. There's just something that impacts them in, in being able to access school curriculum the same way as everybody else. The most common conversation we have is around those students with emotional disturbances and behavior. And yet, really, it's probably the smallest percentage of our population that we provide services for. Our largest group is actually our, our students in speech services and those with developmental disabilities that are in our early grades. Again, just a reminder to the board and I provide this reminder to staff as often I can, it is a legal document. So no matter what we write into that document and how much I like what's written in or you like what's written in, it is something that we are required to provide. And that's been a piece that we're seeing more and more follow-through from everybody on our teams right now. So something that building principals have been great in supporting. And the other big piece there that I ended with, we're really trying to stress the importance of providing as much as we can in the general education classroom setting and really focusing on the curriculum that they should get at their grade level. And as I mentioned earlier, Shannon has played a big role in helping us get back to focusing on instruction. When we get a request right now that we've got a student that's not making progress, she is kind of our first line of defense of being able to go over and sit down with our special education teachers, helping them look at data in ways they haven't in the past and really looking at the curriculum resources that we already have in place to help those students. And, and in a lot of cases right now, the special education teachers that we're getting, we're getting them with, with less training, less experience in the classroom than what we've had in the past. And so it's been even more important that we can provide that on-the-job training. We've collaborated a lot with Amy and with Kara and it's pretty common to come into the office on any given day and for us to be kind of looking at a specific area of intervention and talking through, what do we have? What are we trying to do with that? How does it connect with Fontes and Penel at elementary level? And all of those pieces are gonna help ensure that alignment between what's being taught in the classroom and what we're doing on the intervention side of special education aligns so that our students aren't being taught in one way when they go into the classroom and a completely different approach when, when they go into a special education room or a title classroom. So we're doing more and more work that way, we're not there yet. And to keep from repeating a lot of what Amy said, there's a lot of curriculum work already being done. We've had a really good partnership on phonemic awareness and part of this is in preparation for some of the, the structured literacy pieces we see coming, which ties to the dyslexia task force and some of the work that's being done there. Preschool, she mentioned a lot already and so I won't rehash that. The other piece that's going on behind the scenes is our work as an administrative team with TAZN and really reviewing our MTSS processes. And probably the next piece for our special ed team will be to sit down with Amy and our title staff. And what we're doing specifically is looking at those areas of reading that she mentioned earlier. And we have a, a wealth of intervention materials. And what's happening right now is we have so much available to us that really staying with a real systematic approach is hard in our buildings. And so what we're trying to do is narrow down with the help of our teachers, the two or three interventions that we have in each of those areas that have, have the most evidence base to them and have really been shown to be effective so that we can provide more professional development and really ensure that our teachers know this is really where we want to start and the materials we want, we want to use first and kind of the progression that we want to lay out for them to progress through in hoping that it takes some of the guesswork out of our teach, out of our special education teachers and really will help them to know if a kid is, is struggling with fluency, this is where I'm starting. If they're struggling with phonemic awareness, this is where I'm going. And, and so we're making some progress there. Boys Town, we've seen a shift this year with our consultants and our trainers coming on board that we're really seeing. The focus of that work is not as much on our special ed department, which has been a huge relief on my side. It's not that we don't still have a role, but we're really seeing our consultants in the buildings driving a lot of that work. They're obviously collecting data, they're working with Denise Pratt from Boys Town to analyze that data. And they've gone back now and provided professional development. And what that will allow our team to do is to really step back and look at the tier two and tier three components of that and make sure our special ed staff are prepared for. and tier-three components of that and make sure our special ed staff are prepared for when a student is still struggling in the classroom with those supports, what do we do next? What does that look like? How do we use the tier-two card system more effectively that we have? When do we make a referral to our Engage program? All of those pieces. Denise, when she was in the last time, also sat down with Ivy Briggs at Engage and they, they've done some work, kind of re-looking at the card system that's there and making some adjustments to the motivation system. And so that having that consultant in once a month this year has been a huge help and something that I know was a big commitment from our board last spring, but we're really seeing it pay off in, in results. The other piece I didn't mention connected to that is the role our social workers are playing. At the elementary level right now, they're providing social skills groups, they're playing a big part, when I get to talking about homeless and McKinney-Vento, they're playing a big part there. They've taken our Sabres data that we use to screen all of our elementary students and they've taken it back to our Boys Town skills. And so they're starting to take some small groups and one-on-one, focusing specifically on skills that either teachers or the student themselves had identified as an area of deficit. And so we're, we're seeing what we wanted to see at this point, we're seeing a real systematic approach to behavior. Because all of the different assist systems, whether it's classroom teachers or whether it's our, our special ed programs, we're all working in the same direction, which is what, what we really wanted to see. One of the, a couple of the things that are coming, we are starting this month to put together, together a specialized task force with representation from multiple buildings and multiple programs. We are seeing right now that our life skills program that's been housed at Lincoln for years is looking at the highest student population it, it's had. And what's really happening is becoming kind of a catch-all for a lot of different things. We're seeing students that would in other districts fall into a medical fragile program, some that would fall in an autism program, some that would fall in your true intellectual disability functional classroom. And what we're finding out is it's really hard for staff in that program to, to plan and provide instruction to a whole wide variety of students. And the other piece is we probably, based on the criteria we have, we probably have another six to eight students when we look at next year, either coming out of preschool or currently in our program that would qualify. So what we're wanting to do is step back over the next couple of months and really look at the data based on the students that we have and identify what's our greatest needs. And then also to do some research in surrounding districts, looking at programs that are out there and looking at everything from their functional classrooms, their communication classrooms that would serve their students with autism, their behavior classrooms, and let's put together a multi-year plan as to where do we go with our programming? What do we, you know, do we need to scale back what we're doing and rewrite criteria for the programs we do have? What do we do to provide the best services for all students is really what we're looking for? So our hope would be, we put kind of an aggressive timeline, we'll see if we make it or not. We're shooting kind of for March 1st to make some decisions and to have a timeline together, or at least a rough timeline. We'll see where that goes. I don't know that we'll get all the research done that we want to by that point. And part of shooting for somewhere in early March is depending on changes we make, we know it impacts students for even next school year. And so we want to, to try to give as much time to our teams if there's changes that they need to address with families, that they have some time to do that. I didn't put much in the way of early childhood up here, but it's an area that we could talk about in a whole session on its own. We're seeing questions from the state that may drive our work. There were questions today in a survey from the state about class size and what's appropriate and what ratios they might look at. I anticipate we're going to see some changes in our four-year-old at-risk requirements for next school year. We'll watch and see what that looks like. Amy mentioned a lot of the curriculum work that's going on. We've had a, an effective curriculum resource. The problem we have is when it was purchased five or six years ago, it never really went through a full curriculum process. It never had the opportunity for good professional development. And so we did some of that this fall and our, our staff has gone back and really embraced what the trainer brought in. They've changed their programs, they've changed their schedules. When we went through the redesign process, our team that did that, they outlined an experiential program. Originally, they were calling it Montessori and when we really started breaking down the criteria that they were looking for, it was more of a Reggio Emilia-type program, which I know won't mean much to the rest of you all. But when we really break down what our curriculum that we currently have was designed, that's exactly what it was designed to do. We've just been using it in a different way. And so we've seen a real change there. I think based on the feedback we're currently getting from them, they would like to extend out our curriculum process and continue to, to work with the program we have. But we'll continue to follow the processes that Amy has put in place. We're seeing some good things there and it's the scope and sequence being developed will really help us kind of drive where we're going. But all of that, we get two years of students before they enter kindergarten and we want to make sure we're taking as much advantage of that time as we can. We've done more work with data and looking at our outcomes data that we collect for special education. And there are some areas that we, we see we need to make some improvements. And so all of this process fits well together to really hopefully get us moving in a, in a better direction. The other area as far as special ed's concerned on the opposite spectrum that I noticed weren't on my slides is the gifted side. And probably the biggest thing we're doing there is utilizing the COGAT. The COGAT is designed by the same company that made the old Iowa test of basic skills. We are using it over the next couple of months to screen at the elementary level and this is something we've talked about for a while. But it's our first kind of step into it, so we're starting small. But we've used MAP data from last spring and this fall and identified students that were scoring in the upper end of MAP and reading and math. And we're, we're putting out over the next couple of weeks, they've been going through the sit process and discussing them with school teams to make sure we don't have someone who, either parents have already said, hey, we're not interested in gifted at all and we don't want to offend them by bringing it up again, or that we know there's some other factor to, to kind of how their testing went and that it may not be appropriate. But we will start contacting parents about a voluntary screening process that we will give students who scored high the COGAT as a screener. And we'll use that hopefully to take some of that pressure off of teachers to recommend students for gifted, but to help us in, at, at second and third grade, really starting to identify students who, the potentials there. And depending on where they score, it will help us in determining whether we need to provide additional intervention even before we assess or whether we go right into the evaluation process. So we're, we're kind of building the airplane as it flies right now. And Becca and Shannon have done a great job of kind of working together with our school psychologist team to put a lot of those pieces in place. And so hopefully, we'll, we'll find a process here as we go that will help us in identifying more students for our gifted program. That's an area that we're still under identifying students as a whole. Before I transition to another program, and I promise the rest of them won't take this long, but special ed's a big piece of what we're, what I'm responsible for and so I wanted to make sure I hit a lot of those areas. But do you have questions?
Okay.
My clicker's gone, gone down. I, oh, yeah. I did highlight here, I guess before I moved on, I mentioned that we've been shifting our focus to more the instructional side. These are the indicators that the state collects from us and we should be proud of the work our staff has done. We continue to meet all the requirements set by the state of Kansas as far as the different outcomes, but I thought I'd just highlight. And I couldn't tell you why there's not an indicator for or nine or 10, it's not because we're not meeting those, it's because they don't collect that data anymore, so. Homeless has been another area that kind of, that's taken a little bit more time than expected, but we're making some good strides here. It's, with the addition of our social workers, all of our students fill out an enrollment residential form that kind of tells us where they, they live. Our social workers have taken a big role at the beginning of the year of making contact with all of those families that marked any kind of different housing. And I know in our community, there's a lot of conversation right now around our homeless population. And so I just share a couple of things. One, when you look at last year's data and we're on track to being about in that same range again, we had 102 students who met criteria of, of being homeless. Most of those in ours are doubled up. So there are families that, and there's a lot of misunderstanding about this, most of these families, you're talking about families with jobs, sometimes you're talking both parents with clear jobs, just the cost of living has got to the point where for one reason or another, it's made sense for them to not have their own housing or, you know, paying for childcare and everything else that comes along with, with just the cost of living right now has made it challenging for them to do that. We don't see, when you compare us to Wichita or KCK, we don't see as many families who are completely without housing. We do have a few that will live in, in motels, will occasionally see some camping at Pomona Lake, but the majority of our students are, are doubled up. This last year, that put us at 16th in the state. We're one of eight school districts right now that still qualify or have received a McKinney-Vento grant. And I will tell you, working with some of the ladies on that team, they are phenomenal at what they do and has really helped me in kind of upping, increasing what we're providing to our students and families that are homeless. Sally and I just got back from Washington DC attending the National Homeless, or Educating Homeless Children and Youth Conference. And one of the big takeaways we have is we're exploring a program that got its start in Kansas City, Kansas School District. And understand, I think they're looking at like 2,700 students that are, are homeless in their district and a real different homeless population. But they have put together what they call Impact KCK and it's something we're going to explore. It's more of a, a way to connect families in a more sustainable way with resources. And it would move us from what we're currently doing is patching problems as they come up to a system where we would work more collaboratively with others in our community with the, the sole intent of reducing that, that homeless population. They've created a model with UMKC that utilizes social workers and community resources in a real different way. And it's something as we get more information, we'll continue to share with the board. But we believe it's something we could use more on a preventative, as a preventative model for our system to hopefully move some of those families from being at risk of becoming homeless to moving them out of the poverty situation they're in and helping connect them to better resources. So it'll be something we'll come back and share with the board at a later time. I won't hit on, on, a lot on the qualifications here, especially since I put the wrong one under English learners, that's actually the migrant qualifications, which is another program we won't even talk about tonight. But I'd highlight a couple of things with these. These, our English learner program is one of our fastest-growing programs in our district right now, especially in intensity. We're seeing more students move to our community who, this is their first school experience in the United States and who speak very little English when they come to us. And especially this year, we saw, we've seen a student from Honduras, we had a family today enroll from India, all at our high school. And, and I can't be prouder about the work that our high school staff has done in embracing those students and making sure supports are in place. We've seen, I mean, Garfield right now, I think is up to 10 or 11 students who meet criteria for an English learner program. So we're back to discussing whether, whether we would benefit from having an A school as a site at the elementary level. It is a program that creates its own challenges because we're seeing more students than resources that we receive from the state to be able to manage the program. And Mrs. Christian and her staff do a great job right now of making sure our students are getting what they need. But as that population grows and the need increases, it's going to create some challenges for us in just being able to meet their needs. We have transitioned our curriculum and our assessment over the last year and a half to an assessment for identification of the program that we can use every year to kind of monitor progress. It also matches directly to the curriculum we have. So when a student takes the assessment, it helps our, our teacher in Paris to know this is where to start and this is what to do with them. And so we're, we're seeing some gains. I would hope we would see some of those students that have been with us a year or two since we started that, that maybe this spring as we take it, they'll continue to, to not qualify for the program anymore, which would be fantastic. Some of the other areas, 504s, we're intending in January to provide some in-house training for our staff. This is something we did about two years ago and it's a necessary thing to come back to. And we're going to try to differentiate it a little bit more based on the experiences our, our staff have in writing and managing those. It's one of those areas where a lot of times as we hire staff, they have very little experience writing a 504. And so the only training they're getting is, is what we provide. And so we're going to try to make it an annual thing, but we'll pick that up in January. Foster care, the state's using a new system that we're learning. It does give us a little bit more notification when a student is moving. It's not great, sometimes they've already gone before we get the notification, which isn't helpful, but we're working through some of those things. And this is an area where we're seeing a big transition in our community. What was KVC is now being split into two different organizations to manage that piece. TFI, who was here, here probably 10 years ago, providing those services and Cornerstones of Care will be starting up next year, picking up kind of the family preservation services that KVC all had on one umbrella. So we're, we're learning new staff, new processes, who to contact, all of those kind of things all at the same time. So lots going on in our specialized programs, but is there anything that you would like me to speak more to or you, or you have questions about?
Mr. Robinson, before you go, if there are no questions, one of the things that I did want to address with our board, Mr. Robinson talked about an abundance of materials that we have and trying to understand how we utilize those and create some expectation in terms of, of primary, secondary, tertiary resources, so on and so forth. One of the things to remember as a board is that a situation we are trying to overcome is that in the past, sped resources were sped resources, title resources were title resources and classroom resources were classroom resources. And many times those resources were not shared, even if they happened to be the best resources to provide for our kids. So between Josh and Amy and I, and certainly all of our administrators are beginning to overcome some of those barriers that good resources are good resources. And regardless of whether they're purchased with special ed funds, title dollars, whatever it happens to be, if that is the intervention that we need to be providing across the board, that'll be the intervention that we use for all of our students. But it is a change in the processes that we've used from the past.
And we're finding a lot of those resources were designed to be used in multiple settings, even to be able to be taught more than one time using the same resources in the same day. In a lot of cases, what happens in special ed is it's more the intensity that we narrow the groups, you get more practice. So we're trying to overcome some of those things that we have to have a resource that's just ours. Really what we want is to make sure that what we're doing supports what classroom teachers are doing and make sure that ultimately the kid is learning and making progress.
That's a good thing.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a great amount of very good information. Board reports.
Yeah, let's have three quick things. First of all, to Harold, Julie and Susan there, congratulations on being re-elected to the school ward. And to Melidia, congratulations on your first term starting in January. So I've got a lot to learn in that first year, so, but it'll be an experience that you'll truly enjoy, so. Second, I know in this district, we have a lot of employees that have served our great country. And today being Veterans Day, I want to say thank you to those in our district who have served or are currently serving. It takes a lot to do what they do. And thirdly, on that note, I don't know if any of you have ever attended the middle school Veterans Day celebration, but my goodness, what a, what a neat experience, especially the end when all, the entire student body of the middle school walks out of that commons area dead silent. I never knew that you can get middle school kids to be that quiet. But Mr. Circle did a great job of putting that together and, and I thank the district and the, and the staff and admin there at the middle school for putting that on every year. It's a neat thing to experience.
And Brian, thank you for your service as well. I know that's a hat that you wear amongst all the other hats that you wear and service to.
I like hats.
A lot of hats, absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on, section 6.01, Mr. Graff is going to discuss with us the expansion of wrestling to include a girls' team and the possibility of an addition of a bowling team at OHS.
I brought reinforcements with me tonight.
I brought reinforcements with me tonight. Wrestling coach Dalton Waddell is here to answer any questions that may be more technical than I can answer. Last spring, KESHA added girls' wrestling as a sanctioned high school sport in the state of Kansas. For probably the last four or five years, they've had a girls' state tournament, but it was a tournament that you didn't have to qualify for. Girls could wrestle, they could wrestle boys, they could wrestle girls. They could qualify as a boys' to compete at Boys Regional as well as a Boys State Tournament, but then there was also a girls' tournament. The state has, is considering two options that a school can do. Number one, Ottawa High School has had a mixed wrestling team for as long as I can remember. I've been here 13 years, and we've always had at least one or two girls that were out for wrestling. It was considered a mixed team. Those girls could wrestle girls if the girls were available, they could also wrestle boys. And then postseason, they had the opportunity to compete with boys in regional and then state if they qualified. That option is still in place. But if we have a mixed wrestling team, girls could only be eligible to wrestle boys in postseason. The second option is adding a girls' wrestling team. Doing so will allow girls to compete against girls throughout the season. If Ottawa High School went to a dual format, we duel both Lewisburg and Paola. If they have girls in a weight class that we have girls, those girls will wrestle each other. If they have no girls in a weight class we're in, our girls can wrestle boys, but that's an exemption for just two years. If we have a girls' wrestling team, at the end of the year, the girls would have a girls' regional tournament with the opportunity to advance to a girls' state tournament. Correct? Okay. If a girl is on a mixed team, she can only wrestle boys, and she foregoes the opportunity to wrestle against girls, as long as the team is mixed. So in order to provide an equitable and competitive, I guess fairness or opportunity, adding a girls' wrestling team would be beneficial to those young ladies. The way it works right now, we have two coaches on staff, Coach Waddell and Casey Black, Mr. Black. Dalton has assured me that from a practice situation, that wouldn't necessarily be a conflict. We had a meeting last week, and there were five girls in attendance, and we've had six girls in attendance, and we've had contact from a couple of other girls that may have expressed interest as well. So we may be anywhere between five and eight girls that would be wrestling. From a workout standpoint, Coach Waddell has assured me that the coaches could manage that situation. Where we end up in a little bit of a difficult spot is if, I have reached out to the schools that we're competing against in tournaments. Some of those schools are going to add girls' divisions in their wrestling tournaments, so we would have girls' opportunities at those events where our coaches would be. In the past, with a mixed team, and I will bring Justine Kinnington's name up, she was a young lady that competed for the last three years at the state tournament and did quite well. When we had Justine off at the state tournament, it was the same weekend as our league tournament, so that split our two coaches. Mr. Waddell stayed with our boys. Casey Black and his wife Beth Black went off to the girls' tournament so Justine can compete at McPherson. So as long as we're in the same place, we'll be fine. We go to Wamigo, and they run formats, and we have two boys' coaches off because we have boys wrestling at the same time in different places, in the same gym. It can create a bit of a difficult spot if we are splitting our coaches, not only in the same venue, but in different locations. So there could be a possible issue with number of coaches or support staff to make sure we're getting adequate coverage. Would you like to talk a little bit about how you're going to manage practices?
Yeah, I can. So I've kind of just, based on the number of girls we have, talked to them a little bit. And obviously, for the first couple of weeks, even with advanced wrestlers and boys, we're all going to kind of practice together so we can start from the beginning, teach the basics and stuff like that. I'm planning on, after Thanksgiving break, kind of splitting practices. So my varsity, or whoever qualifies as the more advanced, will probably start off the first hour in the weight room or something like that while I'm working with the girls in the JV or something like that. That way, we don't have a bunch of numbers in there. And then they'll rotate or switch. Or I know I have right now, three days a week, or my varsity guys are going to come in the mornings, I'm going to practice in the mornings. And then evenings, we'll all practice together, or we'll split again with the weight room and stuff like that. That way, everything's not cramped, and I can focus on more of who I need to and not be in eight different places at once. That's kind of how I have practices split as of right now. Is there any other questions with girls' wrestling or anything I can answer?
I have. Go ahead.
I believe if we add a girls' wrestling team, it puts us with one girls' program more than boys' programs. Does that impact Title IX laws in any way, shape, or form?
I don't, I don't think it does. I think where it could impact Title IX is when we start talking about what coaches we're sending to different places. Are we just sending a body to be there? Are we sending somebody that's knowledgeable in the wrestling area? Right now, we have six sports in the fall, we have six sports in the spring, and we have three sports in the winter. So if we would add girls' wrestling, it would get us to four. So I think our numbers are really pretty consistent. I mean, there's nothing, there's football, and there's no like sport during that season. But we do have, you know, boys' golf and girls' golf, boys' tennis, girls' tennis. Track's a consolidated sport, so I think, I think we would be fine. I don't anticipate that would be a problem. Problem would be if we just start sending just.
Anybody.
Somebody, just to be there as a body. I've kind of broken down a little bit what those costs might be. There is $100, $110 sanction fee, and we pay those sanction fees out of the athletic budget at the high school. We get that money from gate receipts and entry fees and those types of things. Uniforms, about two or three years ago, NFHS, National Federation of High School Athletics, modified the wrestling uniform. You know, you have the attractive singlet, the always popular singlet. And now they've modified it to where they can wear a two-piece uniform, which is basically fight-type boxing shorts and then a spandex or compression shirt. And that could be standard uniform for girls as well. Some girls you'll see in singlets with a tee shirt underneath or a compression shirt underneath. And then depending on transportation, we just got an email today from Udora. Our varsity, our varsity goes to the Udora tournament. Udora's adding a girls' division. A number of tournaments that we do attend will have girls' divisions. We had a girls' division in our tournament last year here in Ottawa, and we plan to do that again this coming season as well. So it just, I think it's the best option to add a girls' program because it gives them the opportunity at the end of the season to compete with girls. And in two years, the option to be a mixed team is going to go away anyway. And I think our numbers on the boys' side, last year, we were right around 25 kids to make it through the season. And if we're adding five or six girls, it would be nice to get more girls involved, then they can compete against each other in practice. So I think numbers would be manageable on a day-to-day basis, just when we get into tournaments and those types of things.
What does OU have for girls' wrestling? How many do they have? They have a full team?
Yeah, they have a full team. I think they, last I checked, they had about 30, 25 to 30 girls.
I see there's a lot of interest growing in girls' wrestling. I know I've seen and heard of several girls that don't go to this district that are competing at state in wrestling. So I don't know how many of our neighboring schools have, do they, any of them have interest?
You know, I have that information. I think it's on a sticky note on my desk. I think Spring Hill is double digits, 13 to 15 kids, is that correct?
They have about 30.
Oh, I guess I was wrong.
Yeah. Baltimore has like 10. I talked to.
Piper, I think, has one girl. Tonganoxi is less than five. Paola had their meeting, and they had four girls that showed.
I think Udora had five.
Udora's four or five. So our numbers are somewhat consistent with the bulk of the Frontier League. McPherson has 30-some. They were kind of the cradle of where girls' wrestling in the state of Kansas started. So I think from a Frontier League standpoint, our numbers are consistent with the majority of the members, but it does give our girls an opportunity.
There's 12 states that have girls' wrestling as like a sport, and seven of them are just adding last year. And there's actually 40 colleges that have girls' wrestling, or no, 50 as of right now. Five at the Juco level, 25 in AI, 10 D3, 9 D2, and one at D1 level. So it's growing everywhere, and they say it's the fastest-growing sport in the Midwest.
Was it last year that there was a first, like, high school championship or state deal for girls' wrestling, or is that going to be this year?
It'll be this year.
It'll be this year. This is the first year that girls' wrestling is a sanctioned KESHA member sport. They've had a state tournament at McPherson, I think, the last three or four years, but it was not.
Sanctioned.
An official sanctioned tournament. And you mentioned Ottawa University. Ottawa University recruits quite well for all of their programs. And if we were to establish a girls' wrestling program, it would give our girls an opportunity.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking. We have them right here as a benefit in our community, and I was just curious where their numbers were.
Sure.
We had a girls' golf, and they did great. I think we ought to do this.
We, we had 13 girls' golfers, and two of them qualified for state. And every one of those girls will be back next year. We had no seniors on the team, so it did provide an opportunity for girls to get involved, and this is another opportunity as well.
Yeah. Anything we can do to keep kids involved and active and hooked into school is a great thing, I think.
I don't disagree.
Do you foresee, like, eventually we'll get into like a league title on something like that, start getting enough girls across the board?
That's, I think the Frontier League, we've got nine schools, so I think we have to have five schools that have a sanctioned team in any sport. Right now, there's not enough girls to have a girls' golf league champion.
I just think it's growing, so I bet it, I bet you we'll be there before long.
Yeah, and I don't know what that number would be from a individual school standpoint. There are 13 weight classes? 13 or 14 weight classes? So to compete for a league title, you would have to have full weight classes to have that opportunity. But I would anticipate down the road that that would be a consideration as long as schools keep adding girls' teams and not be mixed programs.
Yeah. I just think it's nice to see girls, stuff like this growing and gaining traction.
You said the last one was heavyweight?
No, 13, because they don't have heavyweight in girls.
Oh, good. Yeah, you don't want to call a girl heavyweight. That's bad.
Mr. Graff, whenever you had the meeting with the girls and the parents, were the parents on board also with having the girls?
We, I'll be honest with you, we did not meet with parents. We just met with, with the young ladies. We had an all-call and just said any girl interested. We'd sent an email out, I think, a couple of days prior too, and we made announcements for about two or three days leading up to that meeting, and we had a number of girls that showed up. And we're excited about it.
Now, I think the bottom line for me is that if we have interest in a program, then we need to do everything we can to provide for that program. Because in the end, there's more experience gained out of that program for those students than just being a student. So I think this is great. I think we should definitely move forward with it whenever we decide to as a board, so.
I think it should be on the agenda, or we can put it on the agenda at our next meeting to go ahead and make a formal vote on that. But it sounds like we have, we have good support here for the program, and thank you for sharing that. And then you also have some information on bowling?
I have some, I have some information. Thank you, Mr. Waddell. I have some information about bowling. We have been contacted by a couple of different students. There hasn't been an overwhelming, I guess, show of support, although I anticipate that that's going to happen, following up with this discussion. Right now, there are 81 schools in the state of Kansas that have bowling. And that's roughly 1,800 students, boys and girls in the state of Kansas. On our side of the state, in the Frontier League, there is only one school. Piper and Bonner Springs are a co-op together. All of the schools in United Kansas Conference, DeSoto, who was a former Frontier League school, Turner, Baser, Linwood, Shawnee Heights, Lansing, all have bowling programs. All of the schools in the, what's the, the league that Hayden's in, all the Topeka schools all have bowling. So there are teams, the Sunflower League, the Lawrence Schools, Olatha Schools, the Blue Valley Schools, and EKL, all those schools have it. So there are a number of schools, there's 41 schools in, from Topeka east that have bowling. There are 40 west of Topeka that have bowling. So the opportunity to get in bowling tournaments would be plentiful for us. I looked at the schedules today. Mrs. Whitaker has called Fusion Lane to talk about the opportunities to get out and practice, and they have said those opportunities are there. Most of the schools that participate in bowling have a joint relationship with the bowling alley that if they host a tournament or an event, entry fees or admission from patrons coming in go back to the bowling alley. We have not talked finances with Fusion as to what that would be or how that would work. The bowling season would start January 1st and goes through March 6th, which is an eight-week season, which it coincides with, with cross-country, with volleyball, basically with every sport that we have. Regionals would be the first week of March. Students can participate in 10 competitions. I think it's something that, that we need to consider in the future. I think it's a, might be a little bit late to add something this year to get it really moving and maybe look at something like this for the 2021 school year. Make sure we have all of our ducks in a row before we move forward on it. But I anticipate that, I know the partnership we have with Great Life from both Boys and Girls Golf is beneficial, not only to our students, but also to Great Life and the business community. And I could see that being a boost or a very positive relationship with Fusion as well. So I would, I would like to move forward on having conversations with our students to see exactly where we are, to see if that's something we'd like to add as well. Bowling team consists of six bowlers on the varsity, six bowlers on the JV, both boys and girls. So we could be looking at, depending on the numbers, we could be looking at additional 24 students that, you know, aren't basketball players, aren't wrestlers, because it is a winter sport. Any questions?
Anyone? For giving us that information, Mr. Graff.
Thank you.
All right, 6.02, the 2021 calendar.
All right, again, this will come off, Dean, if you click on the old calendar. This comes back from the board handbook. It was mentioned that the board would like to see kind of a rough draft of the calendar prior to us putting it out to staff. So here it is. As you can see, there are a couple of things that, that we wanted to draw attention to. One, you will notice that we start, and all the colors didn't show up on this, which is not, not great. So we actually start August 7th with an in-service day. The 7th, 10th are both in-service days. 11th is a workday, the 12th is an in-service day, the 13th is a half-day, the 14th would be your first full day with students. So you saw that first day coming back into, into school as one of the additional days that we added to this calendar through the negotiations process. The other thing you'll see, Dean, as you, as you scroll down there, you'll see that that in-service day, so you have the end of the quarter that takes place on the 16th. So that is your workday for the end of the quarter. Parent-teacher conferences exist that week of the 19th through the 23rd in October. And then you're off on that Friday for parent-teacher conferences and the additional contract day from working in the evenings during that. You will see one of the changes, again, one of the things that the board said was when we had those two PD days back-to-back, we'd like to make one of those back to a student contact day. So you see one of those PD days come off of there, and only the one PD day that exists there on in-service on October 30th. If you continue to scroll down, November looks basically the same. You see where Thanksgiving rolls in there. And then you see the change again in December. You go all the way through December 18th. The 21st is the flex day, which is currently the way that the calendar works. But that flex day is in essence the workday for the end of the, of the second quarter. If you go back up to January, you'll, you'll recognize that we still come back to a PD day on the 4th, which is kind of the way that it's been over the course of the last few years. Maybe the big conversation is what takes place in March over spring break. So currently, spring break is identified as the 15th through the 19th. This will, this will continue to be the conversation that, that exists as long as the region schools continue to be split on their, on their spring break weeks. KU and K-State are the week of the 8th through the 12th. Every other region school is the week of the 22nd through the 26th. week of the 22nd through the 26th. Either way you look at it, there are going to be a group of parents who are not happy about where our spring break falls with their student spring breaks in the region schools, not to mention where any of the other universities across the state of Kansas fall within their, within their spring break. The reason that we have it listed as the 15th through the 19th is that, the same as last year when we had a similar conversation with our staff. The 15th through the 19th falls in the exact 10th week of the semester. So you can finish the nine weeks and move, move into, so you actually finish the nine weeks at, at that, at the 5th. You have the opportunity for conferences, the 8th through the 11th. And after conferences, you can move right into spring break. This is kind of the way that we have done it. If you move it forward, you push your conferences back. If you move it backwards, you had a whole, you had a whole nother week before spring break. And we all know that it gets a little hectic at that point in time. So currently, we have spring break in the same week that we would have it in this particular calendar. April falls out as it normally does. You have Good Friday off, and then your, your, your additional Friday early release days. The other aspect of this is that the 14th is listed there as an early release day. It would be your last day of school for all staff members, or for all students. It is, again, the extra day that we, that we worked in through negotiations. And then the 17th would be your work day for teachers coming back. So you finish with, with students on a Friday, have the weekend off, your work day comes back on the following Monday. When we talked to, to our negotiators about how we wanted those days split, they wanted one at the beginning of the year, one at the end of the year, not prior to a release from, before winter break or returning back. So this is where it falls out in the calendar. There is still a lot of work to do here. We need to, to see how teachers respond to this calendar. We want to get some insight certainly on where spring break falls. But again, as our board wanted to look at what we would be releasing to them, this would be the first draft of the calendar for the 2020-21 school year. Any questions on the calendar? You will see that you see an increase in teacher contract days from 179 to 181. You see an increase in student days from 163 and a half to 167 and a half. So four additional days in terms of student contact time. Two of those are because we negotiated in two days. The other two are because we took out two PD days that had been added in prior to the adoption of the Fountain and Pinel Classroom for multiple days of training that we ought to be able to move past now. Any questions about the calendar?
So this gives us three professional development days throughout the year.
Yeah, in addition to the four at the beginning.
Yeah, and we, and we have the early release days.
As well as every Friday.
Yeah, right.
Any questions for Dr. Cobs?
There is nothing more frustrating than the calendar.
Oh, I know.
And so it takes a lot of work. So this is not one of those things that we take lightly, of course, but we, you know, we appreciate what work you've done for us so far.
I think there's one thing that we, I mean, we've had a different calendar every year for the last seven years. This one becomes as close to consistent with our last calendar as we have seen. We've either changed from early release Wednesdays to late starts, and late starts to back to early releases to this and that. We've had lots of different calendars. This one remains consistent with Friday PLC days. It remains consistent with a vast majority of our, of our PD days. It remains consistent with the start times throughout the year, the addition of a day at the beginning and at the end. Other than that, the calendar remains very consistent, consistent in spring break. And hopefully, we can build upon that consistency and, and, and parents appreciate not having drastic changes in their schedules throughout the year, so. Okay? No further questions?
Thank you. All right, we do not have an executive session for personnel tonight, but you all have been presented with a personnel report. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Do we have Harold with us?
Yep.
Okay, so we have yes. So we have 7-0 on that. And we are down to announcements.
All right, just a couple of things. We start some concert seasons. The OHS Fall Jazz Concert, we were kind of hoping we could get into PAC, but we haven't been through enough trainings yet to know how it works. So we will, we will have that one, I believe, in the Cyclone Room. Then we have fourth grade music programs coming up this week, both at Lincoln and Sunflower, on, I think, Thursday? Is that right, Thursday? We have TAZN coming in. Josh and Amy both talked about our work with TAZN from a curriculum standpoint, as well as from an intervention standpoint. They meet with all of our administrators on the 19th. The big thing, I think, for all of us is ribbon cutting for the PAC is on the 22nd. We'll start at 2:30 PM. Give our students the opportunity, there'll be a theatrical performance, a choir performance, and a band performance in the pack to, to open its doors and welcome everybody in. We will also directly after that have a, a streaming of the, of the Carnegie performance from our choir students while they were in New York. So you can come in and sit in the pack, one, listen to the incredible sound system that exists there, but also watch an incredible performance of our students at Carnegie Hall. Then we have redesigned check-in on the 26th, and of course, Thanksgiving break right around the corner at 27 and 29th of November. So those are our announcements coming up.
Well, this time, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We got 7-0 on that. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. And I am shocked that you all three made it through the entire night. Thank you so much for being here. Mrs. Steinbach, thank you. Parents, thank you so much for being here tonight. Appreciate you very much.